City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona to be held August 7th, 2012 at 4:00 PM at City Council Chambers Building 826 North Main Street, Cottonwood, Arizona. City Clerk, please call the roll.
I'd just like to remind the council to please put your microphones on and off mute if they were on mute. Councilmember Dowling.
Here.
Councilmember Alinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Howdeki.
Here.
Councilmember Norman.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pfeiffer.
Here.
Mayor Jones is absent, she's on vacation.
Okay. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance and would you start the pledge for us, please?
Me?
You.
Yes.
Please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is a brief summary of current events by Mayor, City Council, and/or City Manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. City Manager.
Madam Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, real quickly, we had a Pink Heels event last weekend at Food City, and that's a fundraiser for breast cancer involving our fire department, and they had a very good turnout for that. If you haven't noticed, the roundabout at Willard and Mingus is complete and working very well, and they'll be continuing their work on Mingus. Last weekend, we had the Guns and Hoses football game at Mingus, and it turns out there was some controversy. I'm not sure our police chief knows how to count or something, but the fire department won again. Also, our fire department distributed 100 smoke detectors last week to the Mingus and 10th Street neighborhood, which was greatly appreciated. That's it, Madam Vice Mayor.
Okay, Council. Anybody have a report?
Yeah, we're just, college is getting ready to go again.
And the roundabout's gonna start getting used tomorrow.
The roundabout's gonna start getting used.
I've been on it three times now, and I got off of it. It's pretty nice. Okay. Call to the public. Presentation of plaque of appreciation, whoops, sorry. Call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Anyone have anything for call to the public? Seeing none, we'll close the floor to the public, and the next is presentation of plaque of appreciation to the city from the Verde Valley Marine Corps League for the city's support of the Toys for Tots campaigns. Is there anyone here from Toys for Tots? Okay, I want to award this to the City of Cottonwood and all the council members and the mayor. It's beautiful plaque from Toys for Tots. A little story, I had my great-granddaughter with me a couple of years ago, and she saw this Barbie doll that she wanted to donate, thinking she was going to be able to keep it, and so we took it inside, and we bought the Barbie doll, and she took it back outside and put it in the box with a tear in her eye. Then we went shopping back into the store, and we went and bought another Barbie doll and let her have it because she was so pleased to be able to give a little girl a doll. So, anyway, this is beautiful. Thank you, Toys for Tots. Employee quarterly safety award to Tom Hall, building inspector, George.
Madam Vice Mayor, Council, it's my pleasure this evening to present the second quarter employee safety award to Tom Hall. Tom is a member of the Community Development Department, he specifically are a building official, building inspector, I should say. The nomination was provided by Leslie Wager, who is our front office admin coordinator and permit tech. She said Tom has completed and received over 70 certifications through Federal Emergency Management Act testing. He's constantly looking for opportunities to gain more knowledge and to become more skilled at his profession. He spends a great deal of time out in the field conducting inspections of building permits. He works to educate people when they need to seek professional contractors and the advice and guidance of other agencies. Tom also assists with the code enforcement by inspecting dangerous and dilapidated buildings. Specifically, Tom has, or anything else, Tom is constantly willing and wanting to gain more knowledge in the affairs of public safety, building safety, and because of this, he helps enable our local contractors and homeowners to maintain safety awareness on the job sites. Vice Mayor.
Okay. Tom, do you want to say a few words?
Well, I just, Vice Mayor, Council, Manager, I'd just like to appreciate this award, and I think everybody gets one and likes them, you know, so thank you very much for that.
Okay, Mr. Howdeki, you want to come with me, please?
Sure.
Come on, George.
The City of Cottonwood, this is the second quarter, 20th of April, month of January, 20th, employee safety award to Tom Hall. The City Council, the City of Cottonwood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Put this on before I get hammered up by the guy in the back room. Okay, next on the agenda is approval of minutes, special meetings of 7:10, 12:00, and 7:17, 12:00, work session of 6:28, 12:00, and regular meeting of 7:17, 12:00. Any errors or corrections or remissions? Do I hear a motion?
We approve the minutes.
A second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Norman, seconded by Mr. Alinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? The minutes pass. Okay. Unfinished business, none, and now we have a consent agenda, and I believe there's six items on the consent agenda. Anybody here, anything that they want taken off, let me know after I read them, and we'll take them off and discuss them. Okay, first one is the Wine Festival liquor license application submitted by Lisa, okay, Nyden Pfeffer Roads, how did I butcher that? Applicant for Arizona Stronghold Vineyards for an event scheduled for August 25th, 2012 at the Old Town Activity Park. Number two is a special event liquor license application by Lisa Pender. For applicant for the Old Town Association for a beer garden at 1042 and 1044 North Main Street as part of the Thunder Valley Rally scheduled for September 14th and 15th, 2012. Number three is a special event liquor license application submitted by Gregory Lucky. Applicant for Sedona Pride for an event scheduled for September 29th, 2012 at the Old Town Activity Park. Number four is a special event liquor license application submitted by Cynthia Fox, applicant for the Verde Valley Concert Association for an event scheduled for September 15th, 2012 at Country Bank located at 597 East State Route 89A. Number five is Resolution Number 2654, approving a service agreement with Mingus Union High School District Number Four for the services of a school safety officer to be provided by the Cottonwood Police Department. Number six is Resolution Number 2655, approving a service agreement with the Cottonwood Oak Creek School District for the services of a school safety officer to be provided by the Cottonwood Police Department. Anybody here, anything here they need to be pulled and discussed? Okay, do I hear a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Second? Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Alinsky, seconded by Ms. Norman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, hearing none, the consent agenda is passed. New business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. The first on the agenda is riverfront water reclamation facility, cancellation of the design-build agreement with PCL Constructors, authorizing Wood Patel and Associates to continue developing plans under the existing contract with the city for utility engineering services, and authorizing staff to issue a request for qualifications for a construction manager at risk to work with Wood Patel to complete the design and construction of the facility. Mr. Luter.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. On October 18th, 2011, council approved a design-build agreement with PCL Construction, Inc. for the riverfront reclamation facility. Under this procurement method, the city contracted with a single team that included both an engineering design team, Wood Patel, and a contractor, PCL, to design and construct. The project was to proceed in two phases, the pre-construction, service design services, which is what council approved last October, and then the construction phase services. The plans for the facility are now more than 30% complete, and during a series of recent meetings, it became obvious that PCL didn't feel they could construct the facility to our guidelines. We had several meetings with them to discuss this. With an alternative delivery method, it gives the city a lot more flexibility in working with both a design team and a constructor. PCL's been involved in the constructibility review of this, they've been involved in meetings, and even though the plans are at 30%, PCL's only been paid 19.87% of their pre-construction services fee. Should council approve this? Staff request tonight, staff would advertise for a construction manager at risk to work with the design team to complete the design and then give us a guaranteed maximum price. The main difference between a design-build and a CMAR is in the design-build, the design team works for the constructor, in a CMAR process, the design team works for the city, and then the city would have a separate contract with the constructor who would then work in concert with the design team to finish up the design. One of the other things I wanted to point out, I noticed that there was a story about this project, and that is the discharge to the Verde River. While this project would still meet the standards to discharge to the Verde River, ADQ strongly suggested that we look at groundwater injection as opposed to the Verde River. The standards for the Verde River indicate you can neither improve nor degrade the quality of the water. So, there were some concerns that the water we would be putting in there would be of such high quality that it would adversely affect the aquatic wildlife because they're not used to having the water that was quite that clean. Staff took a look at that and determined it would be not only cheaper for the city to go that method, but the groundwater flow on the riverfront park side of the Verde River actually flows to the southeast. So, by using groundwater injection for the excess N-fluid we didn't use in the park, we would actually be recharging our own wealth fields. So, staff has looked at this, we actually stopped work on this project June 27th, we've been doing some research, and it's just now that we wanted to bring it back to council for consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council? I've got a couple, call to the public. Darrell Smith.
Thank you. Darrell Smith, 2335 West Asolino Drive, Cottonwood. Madam Vice Mayor, council members, I was curious, what is it about this project that PCL felt would double the price? Because it says it would double the price, whatever that means. It means it'd double the price of their cost of 900,000 to 1.8 or 8.5 million to 17 million. What do they mean by that? Next question is, how is it that the staff feels, and Wood Patel continues to believe that the scope and budget are reasonable in spite of the fact that PCL says it cannot be done? It is my understanding that PCL was the best qualified constructor by staff and city attorney. If the contract between city and PCL is dissolved, then what is the protocol under the city's procurement requirements? Would it not be more reasonable to offer new bids for this project? That way, the city and staff will be able to get more accurate bids rather than just depend on what the project manager and city staff believe. Does the council know who the second respondent is for the contract, the original contract? And has the second respondent been notified as city staff that the first respondent, PCL, has decided to cancel their contract with the city and Wood Patel? Thank you.
Mr. Luter, or Mr. Horton, who wants to?
I'll defer to Steve. Any question on the second respondent? While PCL is a well-known construction firm, we did check with other firms, we did check accurate prices of things that can be built. PCL, for reasons that they did not divulge to us, decided that they could not build this plant for our budget. That doesn't mean it can't be built for that budget. We have checked the actual costing of some similar plants that have gone up recently, and by advertising for a CMAR, we're still using basically the same alternative delivery method, we're just changing who the construction company is that will build this.
Would you explain CMAR in case?
Oh, I'm sorry. Construction manager at risk, there's three alternative delivery methods, there's design-build, where the city contracts with a contractor to both design and construct the facility, there's construction manager at risk, where you have a design team that designs it in somewhere in the area of 30 to 60%. The contractor comes in, this is how we built the rec center, was a construction manager at risk. If I remember right, Adolpho Peterson came in at 60% design, and then there's job order contracting, which is what council recently approved for some of our underground work. So, I can't answer why PCL thought it was that expensive, but we have checked with actual numbers on other plants, very similar to this, and we've come back with some numbers that say that can be built for that. And then I'll defer to Mr. Horton on the question about number two on the list.
And if we're talking about number two on the design-build list, I guess the one question I heard Mr. Smith pose was, what is the double amount? I think it was double the entire project amount, was what the design-build team came back with. Staff went back and rechecked, and the design team rechecked, and there were just a lot of people involved in the project that think that the city's budget numbers are still valid numbers, and that the project can be delivered for that. So, with the constructor partner of the design-build team thinking that the project can't be delivered for anything close to the city's budget, it seemed to staff appropriate it to consider going in a different direction rather than staying on board with somebody that thinks that the product you want's going to cost twice what you have to spend on. So, with, and the way staff is envisioning this, I guess there is an alternative of going back and doing another design-build procurement. But like Dan said, the major distinction between those two is with design-build, the city would be contracted with a single entity to design and build the product. We're at 30% completion of the designs, and we do have the design team under contract with the city to do other outside utility engineering. So, what staff believes the more efficient approach would be is to have that design team complete the plans while bringing in a construction manager at risk. The benefit to these alternative project delivery methods is you get the design professionals and the people who are actually going to construct the project talking to each other at an earlier stage of the project rather than having designs, plans, and specifications that were designed without considerations of value engineering and constructibility. With a design-build, you have that single team under contract with the city. With construction manager at risk, you have two separate contracts with designers and with the contractor. And so, that's the approach after a lot of consideration that staff thinks would make the most sense for the city. Did that answer Mr. Smith's question?
Not really.
So, I'll speak to the second part, and that would be his question about that we've contacted number two on the list, and why don't we bring them on board. One of the things we've been very careful about, under advice of the city attorney, is we are not talking with anyone else about this until council makes a determination which direction we're going to go on this. And also, with the alternative delivery methods, once you award a construction services contract, the list becomes invalid that you previously had. So, and that was one of the things I thought initially, and I talked with Mr. Horton, that, you know, can we go to number two on the list? You can go to number two on the list up until the time as you sign a pre-construction services contract, then that entire list and that entire solicitation becomes null and void. Now, on the flip side, while I haven't talked to any of them, I can tell you, my phone's been ringing off the hook with contractors that submitted previous on this, when they submitted for the design-build, that are anxious to come talk to us about going CMAR on this. So, what we've done is we've said until council makes a determination on this, we've stopped all work on this, there's been no design work done since the 27th, and so it makes sense that, to me, that we should be able to go to number two, but that's not how Title 34 was written.
Okay. Mr. Bob Alafont.
Madam Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager, Staff, Bob Alafont, 330 Desperado, Cottonwood. My goodness, a huge red flag has emerged in the last week for this city. A project estimated at one point to cost $9 million is now being estimated by people who were hired by the city, referred to the council as experts who have worked on it for months and months, who now say in writing in your materials, it's going to cost twice that amount. This is astonishing. It's a red flag to stop the project, to reevaluate the project, to get much better information. I remind you that in October 14th, 2008, this project was begun, and Mr. Ken Nickerbacher said it would be in response to a question, how much would a study cost, just one of these preliminary studies, feasibility studies? $10,000, he said. Okay? We go to January 6th of 2009, three months later, what is the amount the city is asked to spend for this preliminary sort of feasibility study? We go to July 14th of 2009, Mr. Ken Nickerbacher, outside consultant, is giving the city council basically a seminar on this plant. What are his estimates of the total cost in the record, minutes of July 14th, 2009? $9 million. The council directed at that meeting, Mr. Luter and Mr. Nickerbacher, to proceed. Unfortunately, it ignored the $50,000 limitation, $55,000 limitation it had originally imposed. I checked in 2010, on September 14th, with the city's accounting department, so far, $75,000 had been spent by then. On October 18th, this council approved $911,000 to hire PLC. PLC, in the application to the council and to the city, said it was going to assemble a team, and who was going to be heading the design management team for the project, the same person who made the $10,000 estimate back on October 14th. We come now to today, where PLC has said it's going to cost the city approximately $18 to $20 million for this project. And what company is left standing? Wood Patel. And who is the main player in Wood Patel? Mr. Nickerbacher. This entire plan should be scrapped. The facility is not necessary, will not increase capacity, is opposed by more than 500 citizens who presented a petition to the council. It is not a sewer plant, and simply put, a city of this size with the amount of money it has to spend cannot afford this type of luxury. If the council decides or insists on moving forward, then it must redo the entire project. It cannot put the taxpayers of Cottonwood when they're being told in black and white that they may have to spend by the experts hired by this council, something like $18 to $20 million on a project that were once told at most would cost $9 million. Can't we give the taxpayers a break in this city? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alafont and Mr. Smith. Anyone else have any comments or questions? And you're going to answer those. Okay. Mr. Luter.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I just wanted to counter a couple of points. If Mr. Alafont will remember, council kept adding things to the plant originally in the
..........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Originally, it didn't have solar. Originally, it didn't have pharmaceutical removal. Originally, it didn't go into the river. Originally, it wasn't two feet above the 500-year floodplain with flood wall. So as the council added those, and there was no change orders, everything was brought back to council on that, and council approved it. So when council asked for more information, more study, we brought back a price that went through the process. The other thing is I'm not exactly sure where $18 to $20 million came from, but even PCL's estimate wasn't that far out there.
Okay, council, any comments or where, which direction do we want to go with this?
It makes sense to me to, if PCL is not able to bring it in where we want to be, I think that it makes sense to go pursue the CMAR option that's available to us. It seems like that's the most efficient way at this point to get the, get the city moving on the right track to complete the project.
And from what Mr. Luter just said, it's not, we aren't here to discuss whether it's going to be $18 million or not. We're here to discuss the fact that we're keeping it at $9 million, right, Mr. Luter? Or close to?
Eight and a half million.
Eight and a half. And so we're not even discussing $18 million tonight. I didn't think so. Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, if we do vote on this, I would like to add in, into the motion that we construct it within the city's budget, which is the eight and a half million, I believe. I would like to see that in there.
And the fact that we did see the red flags, and we did put a stop to the project when we did on the 27th of June, they've been working on this since then to get their information from other plants, other states that are being built similar to this plant. So they've been doing their homework. They haven't been sitting around, and it didn't just come up in the last week or 10 days. It came up on June 27th, as Mr. Luter mentioned, and they've been checking things out, and they've, they've gone through the contracts, and this is the direction that they are asking us to go in and to keep us from having to spend more money than what our budget, what we've budgeted for this. Right, Mr. Horton?
That's right.
And you've been in on some of the conversations, and also I know that it's been, it's been discussed, it's been researched, and so do I?
Madam Vice Mayor, just so the council understands, there's, there's three decisions you're being asked to make, and you don't have to make them as, as a single lump decision. You can, you can take them in parts. One is, in light of the fact that it does not seem that the contractor, who's currently part of the design-build team, can deliver the project within the city's budget, there is the recommendation to end that relationship. Then there's the recommendation with respect to getting the plans for the facility complete. They're at 30% now, and the recommendation is the folks who've been working on them up to this point and have that time and effort and expertise and knowledge already invested in the project, staff believes they'd be the best ones to complete the design without having to reinvent the wheel. And then there's the, the recommendation for how to procure the project itself. And again, with a construction manager at risk contract, there is a negotiation of a guaranteed maximum price. So with respect to Mr. Pratt's, and I think the full council's insistence that the project be delivered on, within the city's budget, that can be assured at, at the GMP phase of a construction manager at risk contract.
And we do have local contractors that are still going to continue on the project at the construction manager at risk. So it's a win-win. Do I hear a motion? Or any more questions from the audience or council? Any more comments?
I think it would just be equally as foolish to throw away taxpayers' money at this point. We've already got that much into the bucket as far as the design phase, and to just cast that off, otherwise it could be looked at either way. So I think that we probably need to see the design through, because without an accurate design, you'll never get an accurate picture of what the actual end result will need to be in that light.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to terminate the design-build agreement with PCL pursuant to Section 12.3 of that agreement, and to authorize Wood Patel to complete the design of the riverfront water reclamation facility under the existing contract between that firm and the city for utility engineering services, and to authorize city staff to issue a request for statements of qualifications in accordance with ARS 34-603 for a construction manager at risk to construct the facility.
Do you want to add, within the budget?
Within the city's stated budget of eight and a half million.
Second. Okay, I've heard a motion, first, a first motion from Mr. Alinsky, second from Ms. Norman. Any comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
You know, Madam Mayor, just let me state that from the very beginning, I was going in favor of this project, and at this time, my vote is no, because I can't support this project.
Okay. Opposed? Hearing, one opposed. So motion passes. Resolution number two, this is second on the agenda of new business. Resolution number 2651, appointing, appointing Janie B. Randall as an associate city magistrate and establishing her term of office. Judge?
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, members of council, city manager and staff. My pleasure to submit to you for additional appointment is another two-year term of Janie Randall as associate magistrate. Just so everyone knows too, I had previously spoke to Mayor Jones, who waived her appearance at this proceeding, since she's busy at work now, and most of the council members are familiar with her. One thing that's not set forth in my materials is Janie just completed the Valley Leadership Program, and she's served successfully during her two-year term. There's no complaints, no problems, and none of her decisions were appealed, and everybody's been happy with the job that she's been doing. This is one of those areas where it's both productive and cost-efficient, and there's no cost to the city by reappointing her, so I'd ask you to reappoint her for another two-year term.
Okay. Any questions from the audience or from the council? Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve Resolution number 2651, appointing Janie B. Randall as associate magistrate.
All in favor, or second?
A second.
Okay, it's been passed by Mr. Pratt and seconded by Jesse. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. City clerk, will you read Resolution 2651, please?
Resolution number 2651, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Janie B. Randall as an associate city magistrate and establishing her term of office. Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Number three, Resolution number 2652, appointing Anna M. Curtin as a civil traffic violation hearing officer and establishing her term of office.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, council members, city manager and staff. Her appearance was waived by Mayor Jones as well, so he's busy at work at the court as well. One thing that's not in the materials is Anna is currently, currently in the process of completing an Arizona program, because someday in the future, Janie's going to leave, so we're doing our succession plan. And she's successfully served a two-year term as civil traffic hearing officer. She's busy with those duties daily with everybody that comes to the window on traffic tickets. We have had no complaints or problems or issues. Her term has been successful. Again, it's a productivity and cost efficiency with no additional costs in the city, so I'd ask that the court appoint her for another two-year term.
Okay. Any comments from the council? Or does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion if there's any other comments. I move to approve Resolution number 2652, appointing Anna Curtin as a civil traffic hearing officer.
Second.
It's been moved by Jesse and seconded by Mr. Pratt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Resolution 2652 passes, and city clerk, would you read it, please, by title only?
Resolution number 2652, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Anna M. Curtin as a civil traffic violation hearing officer and establishing her term of office. Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Number four, Resolution number 2653, declaring for purposes of Section 1.150-2 of the federal treasury regulations, official intent to be reimbursed in connection with certain capital expenditures relating to the Mingus Avenue reconstruction and roundabout project from Willard Street to State Route 89A. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm filling in for Rudy. As you can read, it's a reimbursement resolution for the current project at Mingus and Willard, the roundabout, and two other projects that are in the budget for this fiscal year, hoping to get the funding before the end of the fiscal year.
Any questions from the council?
No.
So this is just to ensure the funds are there until we determine we're really going to get the funds to pay for it?
Yes. So that we can reimburse ourselves for the expenses that we've already put out.
Okay. Seems like it makes sense to me.
Is it a no-brainer?
In fact, I'll move. I move to approve Resolution number 2653, reimbursing various funds for the costs associated with the Mingus Avenue reconstruction from 89A to Willard Street and the roundabout at Willard Street and Mingus Avenue.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Pratt, seconded by Mr. Alinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Resolution 25, 2653 passes. City clerk, would you please read Resolution 2653 by title only?
Resolution number 2653, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, declaring for purposes of Section 1.150-2 of the federal treasury regulations, official intent to be reimbursed in connection with certain capital expenditures relating to the Mingus Avenue reconstruction and roundabout project from Willard Street to State Route 89A. Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Number five, supplement benefit program for public safety officers. Who's taking, Iris?
Madam Vice Chair, and Madam Mayor, and Council. This is something that we are requesting the council approve. You've been given some documents to read and review. It is something that the state legislature has put into effect, retro to August 2nd. If you approve it, we would say that this is, this is something that, as I said, the state legislature has put into effect, and each of the municipalities is asked to do this. How it basically works is that currently anybody who's injured on the job is put into workers' comp, and two-thirds of their base salary is paid by workers' comp. This new legislation is requiring that municipalities now pay the additional one-third that used to come out of an employee's accrued benefits, or accrued leaves, I should say, like comp time, where there's sick leave or their vacation. They are saying that the municipalities now will be paying this extra one-third so that the employee in the public safety arena, fire, and police departments are made whole. In addition to that, the city will be required to pay the employee's portion of their public safety retirement system plan also, in, in addition to what the current payment is made by the city. I guess that's about it, if you have any questions about that.
Any questions for?
As I say, it goes into effect August 2nd. It's set to expire for some reason, but it's set to expire or end on September 30th, 2014. We would like to add to it that our plan would expire whenever the duty to have such a program under the state law expires.
Madam Vice Mayor, the reason for the sunset, I believe, and there was some discussion in the committee at the legislature when, when this bill was being passed, I think it was the Maricopa County Sheriff's Department indicated that they thought it would be a good idea for, there be an opportunity for the statute to sunset if the, the costs turned out to be for cities more than, than were being projected. So it's just sort of an opportunity to, to take a step back and either renew the legislation or let it sunset. So we're, we're just asking the council to allow our policy to, to track whatever state law requires of us.
Okay. Mr. Alinsky?
We have to do this?
We, Madam Vice Mayor, Mr. Alinsky, we, we have to have a plan in place. We, we can set the criteria for eligibility. We could expand it to beyond public safety employees. We could expand it beyond the six-month minimum, but we, yes, we have to have a plan and program in place.
I mean, are we prepared financially in our budget to handle it? Or what do we anticipate would be the cost to, to fund it?
We don't really have any anticipation, because it just depends on what type of injuries, workers' injuries, workplace injuries there might be to public safety personnel. Over the past several years, we've had one or two people who have been off work quite a while, but that's about it. So we don't necessarily...
Fairly infrequent.
And it is limited in our proposal to, to six months, which is required by statute. And in a recent email from Rudy, he indicated he thought we'd already spent more in staff time teeing this up to present to council than we would spend on, on actually funding the program.
I think that might qualify it as a no-brainer.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Ask a question. So this only applies to public safety?
Public safety.
So we're going to have two standards, one for your public safety and one for the rest of the employees?
That's how it's set up currently, yes.
And, and what is the, on the employee side, what does that cover? Would you explain how that would work on the?
A non-public safety?
Right.
It covers, they would be just be covered by workers' comp as everyone currently is, and if you're out on workers' comp and can't come back to work or do light duty, you're covered for two-thirds of your current base salary. And then if you want to make up, you, the employee, want to make up the extra one-third, if you have accrued time, sick leave, vacation, comp time, you can use that to make your salary whole, but the workers' comp plan only covers two-thirds of it. And that will continue for public safety also, but in addition, the city has to make them whole and pay for that one-third. We cannot use any of the public safety employees' accrued time to make them whole. It has to be out of a city budget.
Okay, but we're using that time for the, the accrued time for the...
Other employees.
Other employees. So we have two standards?
Correct.
And, and we have the possibility to extend this program to other employees, correct?
That is the council's option.
Yes.
I just don't see having two standards for, for our employees here. And, and my feeling would be is to send this back to include the rest of our employees. If we're going to initiate this type of a program for, for one portion, we should include everybody else in that.
I, I agree. I don't like double standards at all, but I, I think the thing's kind of ridiculous. I think that workman's comp is, suffices for the rest of us, and I don't see why, no offense to the, and I know, it's just, I just don't think it's, I understand where you're coming from, but I wish we didn't have to do this. Because it does set us...
Well, yeah. If we're going to initiate this, let's include everyone or no one, basically is what I'm saying.
I understand. It just backs us into a corner because we have to, we have to do it. So it sets us in a position where we have to choose a double standard or, you know, put the taxpayers at risk to, to pay more money, to do more, and go above and beyond workman's comp.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I, I did note in there that you mentioned that staff feels like it would be too expensive to include all departments. And the double standard thing is difficult, yet I also understand that public safety workers tend to be more at risk in their everyday duties than, say, other workers. In a sense, for me, I would be compensating them for that extra risk.
Madam Vice Mayor?
That's probably the perception, I guess.
We just stated that, that in the past, we only had a couple of people in public safety that have been out for long-term, correct?
Correct.
And how many people on the other side have been out for long-term?
Approximately the same.
Okay, so there's very little chance, it's, it's pretty much a wash of the possibilities of, of this happening.
Mr. Dowling?
I'm just, just thinking.
Well, I don't like the double standard either. I know that there's probably more risk, but then you've got men on ladders and women on ladders and chasing down dogs and...
Madam Vice Mayor, if you'd like, the, the legislation requires the, the plan or program to be in place August 2nd, so, and we're required to have it for public safety employees, so what the council might want to consider doing, it, it would be staffs, and my recommendation, that, that you do tonight, adopt the policy... that you do tonight adopt the policy with respect to public safety employees. You are free to, tonight, expand it to everyone else, to extend it, or to direct staff to come back to you to further look into costs of doing that in light of, you know, historical experience, and then report back to council. It's just an option.
If I may ask you a question. So you're saying that this item number five, which reads on our agenda, supplemental benefit program for public safety officers, you're saying that tonight we can include the rest of the staff on this?
You could.
It's not on the agenda?
The council, well, because if you look at the background materials, and because under the open meeting law, you can take action on the item listed on the agenda and related matters, the legislation makes expanding this program to all city employees a related matter.
Okay.
Because it's permissive.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I would, I would be inclined to approve it for public safety tonight and have staff come back and talk to us about costs for covering other staff. I would, I would like to see what the costs are.
Some real figures?
The, and on the other hand, if I may, Mr. Pratt, I like to, I don't have a problem with approving this for public safety officers, but if we've got the chance to include the rest of the staff, and I think tonight's the appropriate time to do it.
Mr. Bartosz?
You know, I'm not sure anybody really knows how this legislation got through. I think it was a last-minute deal that kind of sailed through, and its legislation even being a public safety employee in the past, I don't support. Because it, what it does is that, is it creates incentive for people to stay home. They actually make money by staying home.
Absolutely.
And I hate to see this done for public safety, and unfortunately, somebody in the legislature thought this was a good idea, which I don't think it is, but unfortunately, we're stuck with it. And that would be my only concern is, in extending it to everybody, it's going to create somewhat of a management issue if this does come up. But again, as Iris said, the numbers aren't that significant. But again, I think this was a bad piece of legislation that just encourages somebody who can take advantage of the program to take advantage of it.
On the other hand, there is a sunset clause in this legislation, which is, what, 2014?
September 30th, 2014.
And I hope it goes away.
We could have, we could have plenty of information by then, even if we include all the employees under this item.
Anybody in the audience?
My question would be for you to consider is that one additional thing that the city would be paying for is the public safety employees', public safety payment into their payment plan in addition to what the city currently pays. The employee, the public safety employee also would not pay that. So if you're considering making it universal, is that something you would do for all employees also? Just two separate things then?
Yeah, I'm not interested in creating two separate classes here. They're all employees.
Okay.
And I think, just to clarify, because I think Iris was referring to the retirement contribution.
Retirement contribution.
There's an ambiguity in the legislation. My reading of the statute, and it's not, there's two readings of this statute out there among the municipal attorneys. My view is aligned, as it turns out, with the league's view, and that's that the city is required for anybody who's eligible to participate in this program on public safety side, the city not only, and this is the incentive, the counter-incentive Doug was referring to, the city not only pays the one-third to make the employee whole on their base salary, and not only continues to pay the employer's share of retirement, the city now pays the employee's share of retirement during that period. So I think what Iris is presenting to you is the option, and again, it does still create two classes, but whether or not the city also would pay the employee's share for non-public safety employees of the retirement contribution.
It's a little deeper than it appeared at the beginning, isn't it? Well...
Well, if we're one big happy family, then everybody should be included.
Anybody got any other ideas?
Okay. Well, I don't think we are out to not include anybody, but the inclusion could get a little more complicated than we are, than what we have at this point. So if we're to approve it at this point, and then our next meeting, we could come back and extend that. I don't know if that's reasonable or not. I understand your concern, and I think it needs to be addressed, but I don't know if we need to jump through that hoop in one night.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I agree with the city manager. This is an incentive to extend one's injury or injuries. And in light of that, that we, our hands are tied and we have to accept it, I would hate to then extend it. And again, it's not the double standard I'm concerned about so much here. Extending what I think is, as the city manager said, a pretty foolish piece of legislation that would cost the city money. Yeah, I think that's a really good point about...
Okay, so are you suggesting possibly, well, let me back up there, possibly passing this as it is tonight and having a work session with Rudy and our financial staff?
Yes.
To come up with some hard facts and figures on what it's going to cost the city to do the rest?
Yes.
I would like to make, I would like to make a more informed decision.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
The issue right now is, we're as well informed as we are in the public safety. It's the same deal. What applies to public safety applies to the other employees. What other criteria do the other employees need to, need to meet that isn't already spelled out under this piece of legislation?
They were talking about cost.
I, I don't disagree on that. I would just say that I think it would maybe be prudent to approve it the way it is and then proceed to verify that it is actually what we believe it to be in a work session or something along that line, so that we don't make an approval or an assumption this evening and then have it come back and not be what we thought it was based upon our short time of consideration. I'm not trying to keep anybody separate, I'm just trying to keep the meeting going and fully understand exactly what the depth is of the proposal.
In that case, then, let's go ahead and whoever wants to make this motion to approve this, to state that we also put this on the following agenda. That's two weeks from today.
Following agenda or a work session?
Agenda. I think we can get all the information we need between now and then.
I'd be fine with that.
Okay, you want to make that motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion. Make the motion that we approve the supplemental benefit program for public safety officers, and within the two-week period which will bring us to our next meeting, on the agenda have the issue to cover the rest of our employees, or to consider the rest of our employees.
Okay, the motion was made by Mr. Houdicki. Do I have a second?
Take a second of that.
Mr. Dowling seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, I'm opposed.
Okay.
Sorry.
One no.
That's the way you feel, don't apologize.
Just crazy.
Okay, motion passes with one objection. Number six, award of bid for city facilities custodial janitorial maintenance services. Mr. Faust?
Honorable Vice Mayor of City Council, good evening. Your packet of information tonight is award of bid for custodial janitorial maintenance. This is for citywide services. We're asking council to consider awarding this bid to WCD Enterprises LLC for a three-year contract operation with an additional two-year extension, which is identified within the contract itself on a year-to-year basis per council's approval. The council has been awarding this service for about the last 14 years. For the last five years, it has been awarded to a local company by the name of Richardson's LLC, and they are of Cottonwood area. In 2007, they were awarded the bid for $129,607.50. And at that time period, of course, we did not have the luxury of the buildings that we have right now, which we have the library addition of approximately 9,000 square feet, addition of a 53,000-square-foot recreation center, Verde Valley Transit Facility at 3,200 square feet, new court building at 5,600 square feet, the Development Services Department Facility approximately 4,500 square feet, and then also there was an increased square footage total of around 72,000 square feet entirely since 2007. The current cost for custodial janitorial operations over the past year, including the current services for the frequency that we have the facilities cleaned, along with the recreation center, has basically surpassed $230,000. This bid, again, is for $217,860 by WCD Enterprises. They are out of the Scottsdale area. We, when we went out for, looking for this type of cleaning service, staff within Rudy's department had received four bids in July for advertisement as follows. WCD Enterprises LLC out of Scottsdale, Arizona, $217,860. Accurate Building Maintenance LLC out of Las Vegas, Nevada, for $226,936. Bradshaw Cleaning Services out of Flagstaff, Arizona, for $259,694.40. And then Richardson's LLC out of Cottonwood, Arizona, for $264,733.20. The, the one item is that, to just bring out the nature of the budget, is that each department then is charged and cost out per their building, so it comes directly out of general fund out of each one of the department's budgets, line item. The nice thing about it is, is WCD Enterprises, we check them out entirely with the different references and recommendations, and they are currently during, doing the services that they say they are doing, and they're doing above-average excellent work. And we've also touched base with WCD Enterprises out of Scottsdale, had they come up and had all of their staff present. We've walked through almost every building throughout the city, and they're pretty much willing to start services probably by either the 11th or the 12th of August, which will get us caught right back up. Are there any questions from city council as it pertains to this?
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I know we have to go, pretty much go with a low bid, and I hate the fact that it's not a local company, but such as that is, will they be hiring local people?
Yes, they will. In fact, they have their current individuals, they have hired two individuals that have already passed the criminal background history checks that were let go of by Richardson's LLC. They picked them up real fast. They also have three individuals currently working in medical departments already within the Cottonwood area, as well as local bank areas. So they are hiring local people, which is a good thing.
Good.
Any questions? Mr. Pratt?
I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve.
Oh, there's called, somebody wants to...
Oh, I'm sorry. It is on this one. Mr. Alafon?
Madam Vice Mayor, council, staff, Bob Alafon, 330, 330, Desperado Drive. Just two questions. The first question involves, some of us have been looking at the, what we consider to be the deflorable condition of city bathroom facilities in Riverfront Park and elsewhere. And photographs have been taken, they've been supplied to some members, Market Recreation Board, I believe Mr. Bartosz was given those photographs. My question is, does this contract affect those deplorable conditions in those city bathrooms? That's number one. The second one's more of a technical question, you may or may not be able, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay. And the second question just has to go to this contract, any idea what the hourly pay will be the employees this company hires? Thank you very much.
On the first question, I think the pictures were predominantly of the Riverfront Park areas, and again, our park facilities, looking at Garrison Park, Riverfront Park, a lot of those park facilities are between 40 years old, all the way to around 25 years old. And again, they do take an awful lot of abuse. And I know that one thing that has been discussed is definitely part of the responsibility is through our maintenance, and we do have maintenance obligations for those facilities, but we also have obligations on the custodial end of things also. And so we're trying to, we were trying to keep up with the local custodial company as much as we possibly could. I think during the time period that the pictures were taken, the company knew they were on their way out, and so there was not near as much that was done during that timeframe by the local company. Again, they let go of probably close to six to eight people, I think, within a short time period after they knew that their bid was very high. And so though we consider that, and again, we would like to see a local company, especially a company that also is a veterans company, that would be wonderful, but again, when you're seeing that we're already, we would be saving this amount of money, you know, this is the direction we would like to see the council go, to save that kind of money. Our hope is, is that we'll be able to stay on this company and see that hopefully the level of expertise picks up, though the level of expertise probably for the last four years and nine months with Richardson's LLC was above average. Out of a 10 scale, again, we have all of our staff in each one of the buildings, there's a liaison person that grades and rates the criteria elements of each one of the janitors and how they work within their building. The majority of time, it was right around a seven to 7.5 on a total rate out of around 12 different buildings. So it's pretty high. It's a very good indicator for us. The last two to three months, we were seeing those levels going down a bit. So our hope is, again, we have around a 60-day separation clause with this new contractor, and we'll see what we can do with that. As it pertains to the question for pay, for local pay, most janitors within the area are making between $8.50 to around $10 an hour. That's pretty close to what I think the majority of them are making. Some probably start out at minimum wage, but then work their way up into the 8 to 850 range, and then some are at 9. Some of the supervisors are probably closer to 11 to $12 an hour.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Just real quickly to respond to Mr. Alafon, I did receive a letter unsigned with some pictures of the restaurants predominantly at Riverfront Park that had mostly just been vandalized. Some kids most likely had gotten in there and caused quite a mess, and all of that's been cleaned up.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pratt?
I was going to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the awarding of the custodial janitorial services citywide contract to WCD Enterprises LLC in the amount of $217,860.
Go ahead. Take a second. The move by Mr. Pratt, seconded by Ms. Norman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. It passes. And I've made a big blunder tonight, Dominic, I apologize to you. You have this call to the public, so this, the same rules apply. We can't discuss it with you, but I am so sorry you had to sit here all night. I misread it. Dominic Selner.
Vice Mayor, council members. As you well know, my name is Dominic Selner. I just wanted to alert the council that I have filed out an application to join the Board of Directors and Trustees at the Cottonwood Public Library. I actually know that my age is only young, 25, and I know that most of the board members are possibly in their late years, possibly the elderly. However, I believe I bring youth and energy to the Board of Directors to any type of council or chamber meeting or group that I'm a part of, especially with my history at Yavapai College, at the various boards and organizations that I was a part of, which I hope Ted Pratt can actually vouch for, with the few classes that I have attended with him and spoke to his students about. I just hope that in the future, when the election takes place for the Board of Directors, that I be considered for that position. And I guess that's all I had to say.
Thank you, and I apologize again for making me sit through this whole meeting.
It's one I don't apologize, as I said, I enjoy this.
Thank you. Okay, number seven, request of the, from the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce for waiver of Section 9.12.030. Oh, I can't do this. It's Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce. Linda, will you do this? I have to refuse myself.
I have to refuse myself.
Jeez. Thank you.
We almost got our quorum. Well, then we lose our quorum.
Can't do it.
Okay, item number seven, request from the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce for waiver of Section 9.12.030A. waiver of section 9.12.030A, alcoholic beverages are the municipal code in order to serve and sell beer and wine at the Cottonwood Kids Park located at 350 South 12th for the Rhythm and Ribs event scheduled for September 22nd, 2012.
I didn't know if I was supposed to call you Madam Vice Mayor of St. Sure. I didn't know what to go with, so let's go with...
Just go with it.
Yeah. Councilperson Norman or whatever, yeah. This is more or less a seven-eight, it's kind of a bundle. Lana Tolleson with the chambers here to present it, but seven is essentially asking for an exemption. We've been doing this for five years, six years. The first year was actually down at Riverfront Park, so it was a different facility. So I was just going to go ahead and turn the floor over to Ms. Tolleson here and let her take the floor.
Thank you.
We are just requesting the waiver so that we can provide the alcohol for the event that the chamber partners with the city park and recreation department for Rhythm and Ribs. If you have questions, I'll be happy to answer, but I think it's kind of old hat this morning.
Barring any further conversation or discussion, I'll make a motion.
Do it.
All right. I move to waive section 9.12.030A of the municipal code to allow the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce to serve and sell wine at the Rhythm and Ribs event scheduled for September 22nd, 2012, at the Cottonwood Kids Park, subject to approval from the Arizona Department of Liquor Licensing and Control. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let me do number eight, too. Number eight is a special event liquor license application submitted by Lana Tolleson, applicant for the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce for the Rhythm and Ribs event scheduled for September 22nd, 2012, at the Cottonwood Kids Park located at 350 South 12th Street. Ms. Jimenez?
Yes, council members that are left on the... This is the request for the special event liquor license for the Rhythm and Ribs event, and it's for the chamber to sell beer, and I believe, is it wine also, Lana?
Beer and wine.
Beer and wine products at the Rhythm and Ribs event that's scheduled for September 22nd, 2012, at the Cottonwood Kids Park.
Any questions?
Oh, thanks, and you want me to take this? I'll do this one, too.
Go ahead.
All right. I move to recommend approval of the special event liquor license application submitted by Lana Tolleson, applicant for the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce for the Rhythm and Ribs event scheduled for September 22nd, 2012. Second.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Dowling and seconded by Mr. Olinsky. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Vice Mayor? Okay, next on the agenda is claims and adjustments. I move we pay the claims and adjustments. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the claims, pay, pay the bills.
Did you second the motion?
Yes. Okay. I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.